Okay. Good to go. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to City Hall Council Chambers. We are reconvening our council meeting that we began this morning at 9:30 and recessed shortly after 11:00. And we are reconvening and jumping back into our council agenda on item number two, unfinished business number two, which is the rezoning for 105 Kiefer Street, 544 Columbia Street. And thanks for everyone's forbearance. It's lots of people here at City Hall, and both here in Council Chambers and the foyer and downstairs in the Town Hall Room. I hope everyone's is comfortable and we'll try and keep this, make sure everyone is respectful of each other in these crowded confines. But good to see so many people out today for the debate and decision on this item, unfinished business item, from a public hearing that was on May 23rd, 25th, 26th, and 29th of this year. We have sound challenges. Okay. Standby. Get some technical difficulties with sound. Have we resolved the sound issues? We'll just stand by here for a minute. We make sure that there is audio and visual for all the rooms here at City Hall with people in them. And media who are here? Media getting the feed? Okay, this is the only microphone that's on, so far. Okay, we'll test the system again here with audio. Media, any better that way? Is it same, same problem? And do we know we have audio and visual in the Town Hall Room downstairs? Okay, we are gonna, we'll continue to stand by here. See if we can resolve this audiovisual challenge. Given the number of people tuning in here. Let's make sure we get this right. Okay, testing again. Yes. Looks good on that side. You guys good on this side, too? Okay. We're good on audio and visual. The foyer? Can you wave out there if you can hear us in the Council Chambers here? You guys hear us out there in the foyer? No, you can't. There is no sound in the foyer. Okay, well. We'll try and resolve that. We've got sound to our TV cameras. We don't have sound to the foyer. Okay. We're just resetting and we'll just take a minute here to see if that fixes it. Do we know if there's sound downstairs in the Town Hall Meeting? In the Town Hall Meeting Room? It is working downstairs. Okay. So we've got the Town Hall Meeting Room working. We're just waiting on the foyer adjacent to Council Chambers. Okay. And we'll keep testing the system out there. Any luck? Still no sound. No sound from, from the foyer? Very weak sound. Okay. So the volume is not good enough for, in the foyer? Okay. Is that as good as we're gonna get? We do. Okay, why don't we, why don't we get started, then? It sounds like people, yeah. There's lots of ambient noise, lots of people, so if the quieter people are, the more likely it is you can hear what's going on here in the Council Chambers. Hopefully, we can keep fine tuning it and improving the sound in the foyer. So with that, we will dive into today's unfinished business, the rezoning for 105 Kiefer Street, 544 Columbia Street. And first step is to check in with all members of council on the public hearing and their participation in the debate and decision. So on May the 23rd, 25th, 26th, and 29th of 2017, we heard from speakers at a public hearing on this application. And following the close of the receipt of public comments, on May the 29th, we referred, council referred to discussion, the discussion and decision for today's regular council meeting as unfinished business. And councilors who were absent for part of the public hearing related to this application may participate in this discussion and decision only if they verify that they've reviewed the proceedings of the relevant portions of the public hearing which they missed. That's all of us council members. So councilors Ball, DeGenova, Deal, Reimer, Stevenson, and I all missed some portions of the public hearing. So I'll go through the list here and check on whether people have reviewed the video and will be voting. So first up, Councilor Ball, you were absent from the public hearing, May the 25th. Have you reviewed the proceedings and will you be participating in the discussion and the decision?
I have and I will.
Okay. That's a yes. And Councilor DeGenova, you were absent from part of the public hearing on May the 29th. Have you reviewed the proceedings? Will you be participating in the discussion decision?
I have and I will.
Okay. Councilor Deal, you were absent part of the public hearing on May 26th. You reviewed the proceedings. Will you be participating? Okay, yes, thank you. Councilor Reimer, you were absent from part of the public hearing, May the 23rd. Have you reviewed the proceedings? Will you be participating? That's a yes. And Councilor Stevenson, you were absent from part of the public hearing on May 25th. And for all of the hearing on May the 29th, have you reviewed the proceedings? Will you be participating today?
Yes, I will.
Okay. And I missed some shorter portions of May 23rd, 25th, and 26th, taking a breather from the chair here. And I have reviewed and will be participating as well today. So since the end of the public hearing, we've received additional written responses from staff to questions from council. And these responses have been distributed to council and published on the city's website. Are there any further comments from staff with respect to all that?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Yan Zhang, Planning's, Res zoning Planner from Downtown Division. I would just like to provide one clarification with regards to responses provided in the Part Two. The last question, number 26. If you can turn to that page. Specifically, it was asked how many seniors and social housing units and market condominiums there are in the Chinatown area and downtown east side in general. So first of all, there is a correction in the total non-market housing numbers provided by staff. So in the downtown east side, it should be that 2,000 units of the total 7,000 non-market housing units are dedicated to seniors. And this is approximately 29% of the total non-market housing stock in the area, in downtown east side. And then for Chinatown specifically, staff also noticed there is a minor discrepancy in the unit mix. So we rebalanced the unit mix. So it should be that in Chinatown, there are a total of 2,004 dwelling units, composed of 732 condos, which is 37%, and 389 social housing units, which is 19% of the total stock, and 457 single-room occupancy rooms, and that is 23%. And 426 market rental, which is 21%. So we have also provided the revised responses in writing to clerks department earlier today, so you should be able to read them as well. Yeah, so with that, staff are here to provide further clarifications and any additional questions you may have. With me here today are staff from Urban Design Housing Real Estate, as well as Downtown East Side Planning Team.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. And I don't have anyone on with any further questions, so the next step is for, next steps with respect to the recommendations before council. And I've got Councilor Jiang first on the queue.
Are we finished with questions?
We are.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I would move the recommendation as presented by staff. And I won't be supporting them. And I'll be very clear why. First of all, I want to thank our staff for the amount, huge amount of work that they did in getting this application through. And all the work they did with the Chinatown community in a huge way. I'd also thank, like to thank the BD Group for all the work that they did. I know it's been very tough, and you have been exemplary, exemplary corporate citizens in trying to make it work in the Chinatown community. My supporting, not supporting your application has nothing to do with anything you've done. The building is just too tall. And the reason why it was tall, I felt it too tall, it actually didn't come to me until I was in Hong Kong last week. If anybody's been to Hong Kong, in Diamond Hill, there's a monastery known as the Pauline Monastery and the Nianlin Gardens. And when you walk around there, it is solstice. It's a place of quiet in the middle of Hong Kong, which is one of the densest cities on earth. Unfortunately, now with all the development there, when you look up, all you see are high-rises. And it destroys, it damages the feelings of the garden. And I thought of, very much of the Sun Yat-sen Gardens in the same way. I went down there for a walk on the weekend, I looked around, and I looked up and say, wow, it's a beautiful view of the sky. And embodies everything a classical Chinese garden should have, except for the fact that the building would intrude into that view. And I know the developer has gone through huge amounts of work to try to do setbacks, try to move everything back, try to make it fit in. But that one moment I had in Hong Kong made me think otherwise. The other thing that bothered me, that led me to this decision, is a division in the key Chinatown leaders. Many, many leaders I've known for many years, whether it's from Yushan Society, Jiang Wuyang Tang, CBA, and all the other major society leaders. And these are people I've known virtually my entire life. People I've worked with my entire life throughout the Chinatown community are split, 50/50. That's a little disturbing. When I go to a society dinner, or I go to my own society and people are split, we got a problem. Because the Chinatown community has never been that way, in my experience. So I decided to err on the side of caution on this one, until we can sort out some of those issues. On the social housing. We heard a lot about social housing. Well, the units that are being provided to this development by B.C. Housing are cash, or they said they'd build them. But money won't be lost. It can be transferred to another site somewhere else close by. You know, we have made offers to the provincial government on number and number of occasions now, saying we have 20 sites of land in which we can actually build more social housing, some of which is very close. Just transfer it there, that's what we'll say. It's not lost. And finally, to the seniors, I know many seniors, especially the Cantonese opera, who I've been at many of your shows and many of your events, many, many times. We do have a problem. You don't have a place to practice. You don't have a place to call your own. And that's something that we're gonna work on very diligently. And I commit to you to help you find that space. One of those spaces is the Chinese Cultural Center, right across the street. The Chinese Cultural Center is underutilized, and we need to do some work on that to get, to bring it more fully into the life of Chinatown again. So these are the four reasons why at this, I cannot support this, this application. It's been a very difficult decision for me. I spent many, many hours, many, many hours, sleepless nights, thinking about it, going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And quite frankly, it wasn't until I went to the Buddhist garden where my wife and I go every year to pay our respects, that it came to me which way I should fall. There's one other item I'd like to bring up. And in contrast to the class and real work that the BD Group did, is that some of the Chinatown activists, the youth in particular, were very disappointing in their behavior. You wouldn't treat your mother that way. You wouldn't be booing your mother or your grandmother. You wouldn't be jeering them or harassing them in the hallways. I think that is absolutely poor for those people who engage in those behaviors. You talk about Chinatown and Chinese values, and the heart of Chinatown, well, it's people. It's Chinese people like you and me, and we all respect our elders. We all respect, when people were booing Howard Grant, I was so offended. And you should be ashamed of yourself. If anything, you made it worse for yourself. You do not represent Chinatown to me, and the Chinatown I know. And don't forget, I was there long before a lot of you. I worked down there, I did everything down there. So just so you know, BD Group showed a huge amount of class in how they came in, trying to fit in, how to change everything. And many of the, the young people who were jeering the elders, who were in support of the project, shame on you. Shame on you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Councilor Jiang. And just, just to clarify, you, are you moving to deny the application? Okay. That's just procedurally for the clerks versus moving the recommendations and against it's.
Move the recommendations and vote against or for?
Yeah.
What are we doing, moving them and then vote?
Yeah, okay. So it's moving the recommendations as, as brought forward by, by staff and voting against. Okay. And we need a second or in terms of that motion? Councilor Louie will second the motion. Councilor Louie, to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first of all, thank you to the applicants for bringing forward this application and for the number of times that you've tried to bring it forward in a way that would be acceptable to the city and to the people at large for this application, for, for our city overall. Thank you to staff for, of course, your efforts in processing this application and trying to manage a very tough situation, given obviously the outcome of a much extended public hearing process and public process to get us to hear it at a public hearing. Thank you to the speakers on both sides. This is a challenging decision, as I think turnout on both sides was well organized, is one way to put it, on both sides. Both very expressive in their opinions on whether or not to support or not. Many people spoke about their connection to Chinatown and why this place was special to them and what it represented as their place in history. Many people spoke, I think, about the future of Chinatown. But I would say, though, that I think it's perhaps unfair to place those hopes and aspirations wholly on the shoulders of one site, 105 Kiefer in this instance. To bear the burden of what could come into the future and laying it at the feet of this one site is, I think, a challenge for me to accept. I do think that Chinatown is a special place, that many things make it special, whether it be our history, our personal histories, whether it's the opportunities that, that it represents to all of us, not just of Chinese origin, but what could happen in the future. And I think that's important for us to preserve and give opportunity to. And this is why the Chinatown Plan in its current iteration was formulated, after 10 years of process. 10 years of hard-fought debate arguments within the Chinatown community, this plan was created. This plan that this application came in under. And I, like staff, agree that it is conformative to that plan, that the applicant and the application itself meets that test. The issues that have been highlighted as part of this application is that it's too tall. Council contemplated that as part of the Chinatown Plan. We designated a heritage district, which was Pender Street. And HA1A, which is Chinatown South, contemplated higher heights if you were to achieve a number of things, including social housing, which is what this application brings forward. It has 25 units of social housing and at a minimum, eight units at welfare rates. And the rest of it, as we heard from B.C. Housing, has the possibility of going to safer rates as well. Those are affordable units. In a time where our city is struggling for social housing, it is a challenge for me, and it should be a challenge for all of you, council, to vote against social housing. I will not. I will not vote against social housing and put it into a place where I think it can accommodate and should accommodate. There's also senior space, much needed in our city. And we struggle to create this, and as our city ages overall, we've created one in Southeast Vancouver, which I spearheaded over a number of terms. The mayor and I are supportive of another one in South Vancouver. And here is an opportunity to create further senior space, and I hope that we don't lose that opportunity by voting this down. The height, I think, is somewhat of an issue. Certainly, it's taller than some of the buildings, but recognizing that the difference between 115 feet and 90 feet between this rezoning and not rezoning is the difference of that 25 feet having social housing or no senior space. The top three floors are set back 54 feet from the edge and 25 feet from the other edge, meaning it is a small floor plate for that extra three stories. Its impact will be minimal. If you disagree with this design, if design is your issue, council, then tell us what it is that you would like to see different. Tell us how you would redesign, make an amendment on how you would make this different to fit in with the design of Chinatown. Failing that, you are giving up on 25 units of social housing. You are giving up on a revitalization of Chinatown. You're giving up on senior space. I will vote for. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thanks, Councilor Louie. And next to the motion, Councilor Meggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As others have said, this hearing's been one of the longest and most intense, certainly in my time on council. And sadly, it reflected how one of our city's most important communities, Chinatown, a neighborhood that I think we all consider part of the soul of our city, has become deeply divided over the best way to sustain the community while preparing to meet the challenges of the 21st century. Despite the anxiety, fear, and frustration expressed by many, I believe everyone who participated in this debate is deeply and passionately committed to Chinatown's future. The reality is that neither option available to council today, either approval or rejection, can assure that future. That will take leadership, and more importantly, respect, unity, and collaboration. The decision before council's been defined by speakers on both sides as a turning point, a watershed, vital for Chinatown's revitalization, a defining moment in the life of the city, as critical as the decision to defeat freeway development. On the face of it, there's no reason why this should be the case. The BD Project, according to the staff report, is compliant with the existing policies for the site. It has arrived here after three trips to the Urban Design Panel, where the design was rejected twice and set back for more work. What is before us is the result of many revisions, including the addition of social housing and a senior center. But the critics have not gone away. We have heard from both sides. We have heard from supporters of the project, including some Klan associations, people who believe this project is appropriate, respectful of the site, and a net contributor to Chinatown. It is supported by many Chinese seniors who are anxious to enjoy the security and affordability of a purpose-built senior center. We heard from people like William Chan of the Vancouver Chinatown Merchants Association, as well as Chinatown veterans like Henry Tom and Cyrus Lee about the tremendous difficulties faced by businesses in Chinatown, and they hope new development will bring new customers. But we heard also from opponents, many of them from many walks of life, including some from Chinatown's most senior Klan and heritage associations. The Chinese Benevolent Association reported its members were divided, so the CBA remained neutral. The Ma Society expressed its opposition, as did other important leaders of the Chinese Canadian community. We heard from many young residents, again from diverse backgrounds, vocally demanding that the application be rejected. They argued that any gain offered by the project in social housing or a senior center would be offset by the harm caused by a building they consider too tall, too massive, too unresponsive to this critical site, and certain in their mind to contribute to gentrification and loss of Chinatown's unique character. Our job, I think, is to determine what is best, best for this site, best for the community, and best for the city. The site qualifies for consideration for height up to 120 feet on the basis of the rezoning policy for Chinatown South, which recognizes that achieving additional growth and resulting public benefits can be balanced with preserving the important heritage and cultural character of Chinatown. I recall the meeting here in 2011 when council adopted that policy. There was unprecedented unity on that day among Chinatown organizations in support of the policy. And that unity was based, in my view, on the hope and belief that this plan would generate important benefits for heritage protection, seniors' housing, and new life for Chinatown. Development has proceeded quickly with three new market condominium projects on Main Street alone, but the addition of hundreds of market units did not achieve the goals the community and the city had set for the plan. Long-standing small businesses have closed and were often replaced with coffee shops and bars with no particular connection to Chinatown's past. The amount of money generated for heritage protection was far below what was required. Very few units of seniors' housing were built, only about 22, according to Mr. BD, meaning the application before us could double that number. The acquisition of this site by BD in 2013 came just as community concern about the direction the 2011 plan was beginning to emerge. It's a sensitive location, right next to the Kiefer Triangle, the site of the community's 2003 memorial to Chinese veterans and railway workers, and across the street from Sun Yat-sen Garden, the Chinese Cultural Center museum. With the replacement of Georgia and Dunbar Viaducts, this site is expected to be a new gateway to Chinatown, opening it up to communities ringing Falls Creek. But this project, not surprisingly, has become a test of the success or failure of the current Chinatown policies. Important voices have been urging that we review that 2011 process and regroup. That process of reconsideration is already underway. It's true that this project is compliant with the rules in place when the BD Group applied, but if council approves staff's upcoming recommendations for the area, that would no longer be the case. My job is to consider the project under the existing rules. Those rules allow additional height to support innovative heritage, cultural, and affordable and social housing projects. But the overarching goal is to strike a balance between growth and preservation of the heritage and cultural character of Chinatown, and I don't believe that balance is being achieved. For all these reasons, I'll be voting to deny this application. Many speakers reference the divisive nature of this debate. For Chinatown to flourish, this divide needs to be closed and healed, and no one has the right to opt out of this task. If council rejects this proposal, those who urge DeGenova would have a big obligation to step forward with their solutions to the problems facing one of our most important communities. It's not good enough to throw out demands for a land swap or 100% social housing, demands that are completely out of step, I regret to say, with current realities, and call that a solution. The Klan associations that have done so much for our city are struggling against overwhelming odds to protect the 12 key heritage buildings that they own. That's without considering the 50-odd buildings with limited or no heritage value owned by societies that provide crucial low-cost housing throughout the neighborhood. Many had hoped that the existing zoning plans, now to be revised, would achieve that goal. That has proved unrealistic, but it remains the only plan on offer. They deserve our thanks and support for the work they do every day for our community. One way to show appreciation would be to answer the call by Chinese seniors to secure affordable facilities. The real cost to protecting and revitalizing Chinatown, no doubt, runs into the hundreds of millions of dollars. And to be clear, the result would be something very different from the Chinatown many of us recall from 20, 30, and 40 years ago. Where will that vision and money come from? The new voices we heard at this hearing have to continue their engagement and show real respect to those who helped build Chinatown by forging constructive alliances and practical programs to achieve the new future for Chinatown we all aspire.
Meggs, I need you to wrap up.
Without, without action like that, this watershed or turning point moment may just be the point at which many conclude the cause is hopeless. I pray that's not the case.
Okay. Thank you. Next up is Councilor Deal.
Yes, thank you very much. This has been a very challenging hearing for us and a challenging decision. We face audiences that don't want things built with some frequency, but I've never before seen such a strong division within a community with some of the most respected people on both sides of the argument. I want to offer my thanks to the BD Group for, for their persistence in bringing forward this project and continuing to alter it, to try to please people. Our staff have done a great job on this. But with so many voices that I respect on both sides of this argument and such clear divisions in the community, I'm afraid I can't support it. divisions in the community, I'm afraid I can't support it. This has been a really hard one for me, and I've got to say that one of the things that made it very, very difficult for me was some of the bad behavior. Seeing people bully, seeing people boo Howard Grant, seeing that kind of behavior, and having the social media make assumptions about our position and treat us with disrespect here in the council chamber as well. That did not make it easy for me to make this decision. In fact, it was very difficult to shut that out and focus instead on the merit of the argument made on both sides of this discussion. The arguments have been well made by my council companions here, and again, I respect the difference in opinion around this chamber, but I truly feel that Chinatown is a very special place, and this is a very special site. It backs onto the historic national site. It has the triangle there. It has the garden there. This is a special site, and I think that we can do better here, and I don't think that we can continue with the division that I've seen within Chinatown, within all those people that I have so much respect for that are deeply divided over this. I'm hoping that we move forward. I think that Counselor Meggs put it well, that we move forward and heal some of those divides and start working together towards truly saving Chinatown, because we are at risk of losing this important place for us, for the city, with the heritage and the history that's there. The seniors' things, I will work with Counselor Jiang and everybody else around here to find you what you need for space. I think that's a very, very important piece of this. I won't go on to any other length, though, because I think it's been well stated already. I just want to say that the division has been disturbing to witness and that I really hope that we can come together and work together to save our Chinatown that we all love so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stevenson, next.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Well, obviously, this has been probably the longest public hearing and the most difficult that I've been through in my time on council, other than maybe the public hearing on the casino some time ago, which was also a very long one. This was particularly difficult, I know for me, and I'm hearing also from other counselors because of this huge division within the Chinese community. Obviously, Chinatown is not somewhere that I know as intimately as either Counselor Jiang or Louie, and so I've had to listen to them and seek their advice. But in listening to the proposal as well, I have come to believe that this, in fact, this building is too tall, and the trade-off for some minor, really, numbers of social housing is not worth it, in my opinion. I'm concerned, obviously, about seniors' community center, as I'm the liaison to the seniors' committee here at City Council. And I, too, commit to working with Counselor Jiang and Counselor Louie to deal with this particular issue if this doesn't go through at this time. I also wanted to comment on really what I found quite disturbing. Some of the younger people who came and were not respectful either to council, but more importantly, to their elders. And that also set me aback as to, wow, how to vote in light of this, and are we getting this kind of voices rather than voices of seniors who've been in the community for a very long time? But in the end, I realized that I, too, when I was young, was just as passionate and just as keen to get what I wanted passed, and I remember those days, and I'm really actually pleased that young people are so engaged. I hope they keep that up, and I hope young people throughout the city are as keen to be involved. But I would urge a little more respect for their seniors, and if this does not pass, I think they need to make some moves in healing the rift that has occurred. So with those brief remarks, I certainly agree with everything that Counselor Meggs and Counselor Jiang said. I will not be voting in favor of this.
Thank you. And Counselor Carr is next.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I too want to offer my thanks to the public and to everybody who input into this public hearing. Incredible letters that you sent, a lot of work that you've done in researching, and I really appreciate everyone's input and, of course, the work of our staff. And to acknowledge to the BD group, who have a very strong philanthropic tradition within our city, and I very much appreciate that. Three questions emerged for me in listening to what everybody said to us during these hearings. One, is this building the right height and density for its location? Two, do the offered amenities warrant any extra height? And three, will this building destroy or revitalize Chinatown? On the first issue, two to one, the majority of speakers, emails, petitioners, said that this building is too high and too big for its site. This is a very special site, as others have said. It is right next to and how did the building would overshadow National Historic Site of Chinatown? It's right adjacent to the Memorial Square and across the street from the Dr. Sun Yat San Gardens. The Chinatown Historic Area Planning Committee also voted no for these very reasons, stating that height and density are overwhelming concerns. Although the urban design panel approved it, they also said the panel is still split on whether the scale, massing, and height are appropriate. On the second issue, two to one, again, the public said the offered amenities do not warrant any extra height. We are in an unprecedented crisis in terms of affordable housing within this city. 25 units of social housing with actually, at this point, only eight being affordable, and those at the Hill's rate, $700 a month, still unaffordable for many of the Chinatown seniors, is not good enough. There's also no long-term security for the amenity space that was offered for the 12 cultural groups. It's just for 10 years, and we don't know what would happen after that. I also just want to point out for me, it is so disturbing in a public hearing to hear how the argument over height and density versus public amenities divides our community. This kind of way of negotiating amenities for the extra height and density that people feel will destroy the character of their area, it's no way, no civil way, to plan a good socially cohesive city. On the third issue, will this building destroy or revitalize Chinatown? Well, it's impossible to know for sure, but I do take my direction from the many experts that did come forward to us. I'm alerted by the statements where people said, "This is like the turning down of the Chinatown freeway." It is of that importance because of the symbolism of this site. I'm also convinced there's a problem when Chinatown is listed number two on Heritage Canada's Endangered Historic Site list and in the top 10 of endangered city sites by Heritage Vancouver. Moreover, I am very compelled to listen when there are key community leaders who spoke out so decisively on this, the late Zhou Wei, the late Bing Tom, Andy Yan, Shirley Chan, Fred Ma, William Ma, Nathan Edelson, Jenny Kwan, and I could list so many more and so many more groups. They raised such convincing points in terms of this site signaling an entrance to Chinatown and signaling a future for the Chinatown area. The key point, too, is that there's a realistic concern that by putting high-end condos on this site, it will indeed lead to the increased valuation of land and the increased unaffordability of housing in the area, and in fact, the unaffordability of store rents, which could mean the loss of so many of the stores that really create the character of Chinatown. Finally, our job as counselors is not just to decide whether a project fits within city policy. It is to ensure that development favors the public good, not excessive developer profit. I am unconvinced that the waiver of CACs is justified in this case. It does not seem right to me that 25 units of social housing for seniors which are being paid for by B.C. Housing is some justification for the waiver of those CACs. I'm also alarmed by the unprecedented move by the developer to negotiate directly with B.C. Housing. It does not give me confidence that they got the best deal they could for the city. Finally, I believe we are making a decision contrary to emerging policy decisions that are coming down the pipe, and I know that we are deciding within current policy, but when we know the rules are going to change for Chinatown, it doesn't make sense to me that we would let this one building, this iconic building, through at this point in time. So I will be voting no, and I'm not like Counselor Louie suggests, voting no against social housing. I'm voting no in the hopes, and I don't know how the rest of you are going to vote, that this will be defeated, in which case we can move forward with a potential purchase and seeking of government money to purchase this site for 100% social housing.
Thank you. Counselor Carr. Counselor Affleck is next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Vancouver, perhaps democracy is not dead at the chamber. I'm really, really quite in shock today. In six years in council, I've never seen this happen before, where we have Vision Vancouver voting against a document that proponents plan for a building in the city. At this point, we're sitting at five votes against, and I think that, I'm pleased to see that I am also opposed to this, which makes it six votes against. And I think that it's challenging, and I think that we have said that many people, what my fellow counselors have said here today, I, of course, agree with, that this building did not meet the main criteria, and that is generally, the thousands of emails we received against it, the 300-plus speakers that came to speak against it, height, whether there's really, truly social housing. Eight units is not a lot of social housing, Counselor Louie. It's only eight units. Counselor Carr addressed that. Not 25, it's not 50, it's not 100, it's eight units. There's no commitment 100% from anybody for more units than that. To approve that for eight units is not good enough to me. The community came out very clearly against it from a design point of view, how it fits in culturally. These kinds of projects come to us all the time at public hearing, and every time in the past, for six years that I've been here, Vision Vancouver have voted for those units. Today, I'm pleased to see that they are split on this one, which is interesting, but I think it's the right decision for Vancouver, and I think it's potentially good news for Vancouver that if you have 300 people who come and scream and yell at us and tell us we're making the wrong decision, and you send us thousands of emails, there's hope, Vancouver. You can turn these guys around. They might actually change their mind. It's a miracle. The miracle at Canby and at the City Hall in Vancouver. So, I mean, 12. I mean, 12. So I will not support this. I appreciate staff's hard work on this. I appreciate the proponents' work on this, their engagement with the community, but it's clearly, clearly did not do enough for the community to support this, so I won't support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor DeGenova.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will echo some of the comments that other counselors had made, but first, I want to speak from my heart. Chinatown is very near and dear to my heart. I spent much of my childhood growing up in Chinatown. My father was a paper salesman, and although he was of Italian descent, he actually had to learn Cantonese to get himself through and to support his family of three young children. So I spent many of my Sundays going around with a stick of dollar meat and meeting all of the business owners there, and it was a very, it's a very special place to me, and I feel that I've learned a lot there and that it's a place you can go back to, and it hasn't changed here in Vancouver. That being said, it's certainly difficult to celebrate culture and community while still listening to the community's needs and what they need to move forward. We have to make sure that we balance revitalization and heritage and at the same time, listen to the community. Chinatown is very special, and it's not something that if we ever change here in Vancouver that we'll be able to get back. That being said, the needs of people have changed. I remember, just as Counselor Jiang had mentioned, that, you know, his decision came from his visit to Hong Kong. I remember just a few months ago at another public hearing just outside of Chinatown on Gore Street, where we really didn't have very many people here opposed to anything except a mural. An individual who said that all they could afford after they had paid for housing in Chinatown was a head of cabbage and some gelatin. And to me, that was very disappointing, to hear that seniors don't have that housing. Now, some counselors here can debate that 25 units isn't enough, and eight units at deep affordability rates isn't enough, but I know from my experience, both in the private sector and from my many years in non-market housing, that many nonprofits and many social housing agencies start with only a few units, and they build those units. They grow that. In fact, an organization that I work with started with one home and now has grown that to 300 units. So the most affordable housing is the housing that you build today for tomorrow, and I think we have to see that and we have to keep that front of mind here. As Counselor Louie had said, a vote against this project, in my opinion, would be a vote against social housing. We're also seeing amenity space here. We're seeing more than just housing for seniors. We're seeing a way to bring them into that triangle to allow them to participate in activities and have space that otherwise could be retail space. I asked many questions of the speakers. One of those questions was, you know, would you prefer that in the policy, nine stories of luxury condominiums could be built? Would you prefer that? And I heard yes. Well, I wouldn't prefer that over the applicant offering us social housing and amenity space for seniors, which is so important in Chinatown. I have to say that I'm very concerned about the behavior myself, and I think that regardless of how people are voting and how we're hearing that they're voting, everyone echoes that. I have to say that as the only millennial here on City Council, to hear especially that certain groups of millennials were bullying, targeting, coercing, or trying to actually encourage speakers who are waiting to speak not to speak, if they were speaking either against the project or for the project is very disturbing. Counselor Deal, I think, said it very well, you know, on social media, to try and oppose our votes or after public hearing is closed to continue to send things that we can't consider. I mean, I have to say, I was told to go on permanent maternity leave by someone. I didn't think that would be brought into the conversation here. But that being said, you know, I was very disappointed in that, and I would hope that it's not just going to be seen on millennials. I think Counselor Stevenson said it very well. It's good to see more young people engaged and passionate, but please, come and speak your mind. Don't try and coerce others into what they should feel or what they should believe. The community is very split here, but that being said, I've seen from our staff that the applicant has come back many times, the urban design panel has worked with our staff, and in fact, I asked a question, and staff would like to see the applicant go three feet higher than they're going. So that was something I had to weigh in my decision also. I'm getting very close to the end of my time, but for the reasons I've stated before, I certainly will be supporting the project. And it's sad to see that we won't have a partnership with B.C. Housing and that eight units of deep affordability, and eventually, there would have been 25 units of social housing in Chinatown that's badly needed for the seniors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Counselor Reimer is next.
Thanks, Mayor Robertson. Well, I was going to start my remarks with some historical references, the first of which happened roughly three and a half hours ago, where I voted against a rezoning that had a handful of speakers. So I would say Counselor Affleck's remarks were a gross mischaracterization and a dangerous one, as I will get to later in my remarks. The other piece of history I wanted to point to is the passing originally of the Chinatown Plan that established the rezoning policy that we're considering this rezoning under. As those of you who were on council at the time know and members of the community, I had quite a lot of concerns about that plan at the time, but it was, as noted today, the result of a 10-year process and as spoken to often in 2011 and even referenced six years later, just a few weeks ago, considered to be an elegant compromise. And I felt, as a relative newcomer to the debate, that it wouldn't be appropriate for me to tip the balance of that compromise. So when I voted to support that plan, I was wary for two particular reasons. The compromise was between heritage and new buildings, but did not include much consideration of the needs of the low-income community. Indeed, it actually preserved the targets from the downtown east side housing strategy from 2005, which saw vastly increased market housing targets and actually reduced low-income housing. It was the only part of the downtown east side that would see reduced low-income housing. The second reason I was wary was the elegant compromise of the rezoning policy rested on what I felt was a knife-edge of whether or not the design of a building upheld the character of Chinatown with a lot of gray area as to how one would decide what that was, and we saw that chicken roosting here in chambers over this last number of weeks of the public hearing. So on the first issue, while I remain concerned about it, it's not material to the public hearing, so the plan is passed, the policy is the policy, so I will stick to the second point. So on the second point, specifically, are the the benefits, public benefits, design and character aspects of this building sufficient enough to justify the granting of additional height? The site was under that consideration more than any other. We actually made an amendment, councillor Louie made an amendment to the original January 26, 2010 staff report, which explicitly stated that this site would need extraordinary character, design, and benefits in order to achieve additional height beyond the 90 feet. I am not an expert in design, so I agreed, so I depend a lot on experts. The internal ones, as we've heard, gave mixed feedback, at a variety of different times, voted on different sides of the issue. So then it was up to the external experts. Many of the speakers who came to the public hearing also came to the 2011 Chinatown public hearing, so at least it gave me some opportunity to evaluate whether or not this building rested on the knife-edge that they originally set out for us in their elegant compromise of the rezoning policy. However, there again were mixed opinions. So that brings me to roughly 8:30 this morning, when I woke up and had to make a decision on this. It has been a very difficult process, and I have found it very hard to navigate the strong emotions people have brought to both sides of the decision. While many of the speakers have been heartfelt, they've also been very respectful of other points of view. It's been great to see new people. I know that the younger millennial and under crowd has been referenced, but I also found it equally inspiring to see Chinese seniors overcome language barriers and financial circumstances to make it to council in order to be heard. I wanted to thank the staff and the applicants for what I feel, I mean, we got a taste of it, but you've gone through quite a number of iterations of this, so I feel there must have been an extraordinary level of grace and patience with a long and difficult process. What hasn't been great, and many have referenced it, is the behaviour which, while limited to only some of the participants, led to circumstances that made it very difficult for people with an opposing point of view to speak. I have fought very hard to increase participation in democracy, especially by members of vulnerable groups, and this morning I woke up wondering how it is that I can cast a vote on the side of what at times felt like a mob in the chambers here, or especially outside the chambers. It's been referenced, but to hear people acknowledge territory and then subsequently boo an elder and elected councillor of the Musqueam Nation was one of the most difficult moments I have had in this chamber. But my vote needs to be on policy, not how I'm feeling. So in my opinion, this building does not adequately address adjacent cultural resources, nor appropriately reflect the character in a way that meets the community expectations of the plan. Councillor Louie challenged me to propose changes. There have been multiple revisions by experts, so I would deem it unlikely that it would be fixed here by me today. I cast this vote against, not because I am wary of the plan, but precisely because I respect the plan. It was an elegant but fragile compromise, and my opinion is a no vote is the best way to maintain the compromise.
Thank you. And councillor Ball, next.
My colleagues have all spoken eloquently. This has been one of the most difficult hearings that I've ever gone through at council over the last decade, and it is not just because of the anger that was in the room so often, it was because of the pain that was in the room. And the pain of history, and the pain of poverty, and the pain of what to do when you hear about poverty and pain, and the reactions that you can have personally to them. How do you solve the problems of poverty? And so often, we heard that people needed a place to live, that they needed a place that they could afford, that they needed this social housing. We listened to the seniors in spite of the noise and everything. We did concentrate. We wrote down everything that people said. I know that I certainly made those notes both by hand and on my iPhone. So I could go back over them a number of times and try to remember what was most important to people when they spoke. And they spoke about wanting a place to express themselves, wanting a place to live. And I kept going over and over, but what about heritage? And how should I feel about the heritage? And I kept thinking, well, in this building, we're not tearing down anything. At least we're not tearing down a building, because had we been tearing down one of the benevolent societies, I think I might have had a different response than I do, because I would have felt that that was a terrible mistake, because I know Chinatown very well. I spent my childhood there every single weekend. My father worked on a number of projects there. I love and respect the people there. But I particularly respected the seniors who did come, who I do believe know what they were doing. I do not think that they are stupid or uninformed. I do believe that they know what they wanted, and I heard that. I also felt that it was really important that we had young people here expressing their opinions and their care about a community that mattered to them. All over Vancouver, we have had people angry about rezonings, but this one was unusual in that the community was divided, and that's the pain for any of us here, is that the community was divided. So what side do you land on? Who do you hear? And for me, in this particular one, I have to hear the people in need. I have to hear the people that need a place to live in. And councillor Louie spoke very eloquently about social housing. I think that to deny anybody, any possibility of social housing is hard to do, and I can't do it tonight. So I will be voting for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ball. And I am last on the queue here to speak to the motion. And lots been said, a lot of good words said by all of council. Appreciate all the thoughtful comments made and opinions on both sides. I want to thank everyone who's here. It's amazing to see so many people here today. It really speaks volumes to how passionate Vancouverites are about Chinatown, and it's great to see this level of engagement over many days and nights. People were consistently showing up, and I think that's a fantastic sign. This debate certainly moved far beyond the specific site. I think that's been the challenge for council. This debate turned into, you know, the future of Chinatown, and I think we have to keep our perspective that this is one piece of land, one proposed building site. It in of itself cannot make or save or destroy a neighbourhood. It is one building. That said, there are obviously very, very strong feelings about what this building looks like, and how big it is, and what's within it. I think, to the applicants, the BD group, kudos for your years of effort to try and make this work for the community, to bring forward something that obviously has a business case but that responds to community needs. I think you conducted yourselves very respectfully in that way, and did your best work on this to meet the policy that has previously been approved by council and to staff as well. Again, I echo the thanks from all of council for all of your great work on this, and your extensive work in the community to try and bring forward your recommendation to council on this and shape the application to meet the policy. A lot has changed in Chinatown over the last six and a half years since we approved that plan, which was, as others have said, over a decade in development. We have seen real change and impact in Chinatown from the new buildings that have gone up. I think we've seen a lot of new energy in Chinatown, and I think the fact that so many people have taken part in this public hearing, have gotten engaged, is testament to a life being alive and well in Chinatown, that Chinatown continues to be a really heart and soul for Vancouver, and something that so many are passionate about. The question is, where we go from here, and I think, you know, great to see new voices from every generation showing up to weigh in on whether this is the right direction to go. For Chinatown and this building, there was a lot of anxiety from speakers. There was a lot of negativity that's been addressed, I think, by members of council, which we don't want to see here again. This place is all about respect and respecting each other's opportunity to speak to important issues in our city, and we need to steadfastly defend that necessity that respect is at the core. So there's lots of room for improvement there, and that will be a critical piece in the next decisions and direction for Chinatown. We have to see that respectful tone and conduct between all of us related to this, but it speaks to the passion. There were so many people engaged in this and very, very strong opinions, and that has set up a very difficult decision for council. I am going to vote against the motion with the recommendations, primarily based on the overwhelming opposition to the rezoning from the community. The correspondents, the speakers, the petitions, were all strongly leaning towards turning down this proposal. And again, as many others have spoken to, the division in the community is what's most upsetting here, that it didn't get to a place where there was a majority of people in support, but more importantly, that the, I think, the weight of evidence on both sides was very conflicted, and it did not improve over years of process. And that is unfortunate. We need to see some sense of momentum that we're going in the right direction when we consider these, and I think unfortunately, notwithstanding some very good arguments and work done by the applicant and staff, and community leaders who stood in favour of this, seniors who stood in favour, and the importance of social housing, I think it just cuts far too deep a divide in the community to advance and see this built. So I think our real test is what happens moving forward. We have a big challenge here on this site specifically, going forward. I'm hopeful that there is an opportunity with the BC and federal government to partner here and to respect a very special site that is surrounded by important monuments to the Chinese-Canadian community, and an important location for us to be mindful of change in the future. But that will take the involvement of other levels of government and a lot more commitment from the community to help shape what makes the most sense for the Kiefer Triangle. So again, appreciate that passion, that commitment to Chinatown. We need to convert that into some really smart work from here forward, to make the best decisions for this site on the Kiefer Triangle, and hopefully end up with a solution that does work for community, that brings people back together. It's not easy to do in Vancouver, given development pressures, the need for social housing, the need for us to be proactive about the change. I'm just unfortunate that this application does not meet that test. We need to do everything we can to bring the community back together around a solution that can deliver on those important elements without the division and the challenge that we saw through this hearing. So I'll look forward to next steps. I appreciate everyone's energy to get us to this point, and appreciate the work of council over 26 hours of meeting here. No doubt, one of the most passionate responses that I think we've heard in these chambers and certainly in my nine years almost of mayor. So a big thanks again to everyone involved, and I believe we are ready for the vote. Council can go to their voting screen here. Recommendations are moved, so you either support the recommendations. I have Stevenson and Ball. We're just voting yes or no on the motion. Okay, we're locked in. 11 votes, three are in favour and eight in opposition. Robertson, Stevenson, Deal, Jang, Reimer, Meggs, Carr, and Affleck in opposition. So the motion does not carry, and we have concluded on that item of unfinished business on that rezoning. So thanks again to everyone for attending, and stay tuned on the next steps. Thanks again. Okay, we'll just take a minute here for people to shift gears. We still have council business to conclude, so we'll just take a minute while people move around, and we'll be back with our final item on the council agenda in just a minute here. Stand by. Okay, we're ready to consider the final items of our council agenda. We have notice of motion, new business inquiries, and other matters. If we could get those doors closed, that would be great. Okay. All right. We have notice of motion, new business inquiries, other matters, the final item on our council agenda for today. And on that is one item of new business, which is a request for leaves of absence for councillor Stevenson for meetings to be held June 22nd, councillor Meggs for civic business for meetings to be held June 27th, and for me, for meetings to be held June 27th and 28th. Moved. I'll need a mover and seconder, Louie and Deal, and any discussion on those leaves. And we're ready for the question. All those in favour? Any opposed? None opposed? That carries unanimously. And we'll go to the queue for further items. Councillor Louie?
Yes, I've submitted a motion to the clerk as notice of motion for consideration at next council. That can be distributed to, I'll just take a minute to introduce it. Given the proceedings that have just occurred, this will be pretty self-explanatory. This is in support of finding some Chinese cultural senior space within Vancouver. It outlines and the wherethes, the reasons why. This is the direction to staff to explore all options to secure sufficient and affordable space for these groups of Chinese seniors, including use of financial subsidy or securing other space through perhaps another development proposal, or a development proposal, and that staff report back on viable options at the last city council, by the last council meeting in October. I'll just take a minute to say that this is not exclusive to Chinatown, that perhaps there is other locations that have become available, but certainly if there's ways to work with whichever new space is available, and perhaps the city should explore that, including perhaps 105 Kiefer in some fashion. But we'll debate it at next council.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Louie. And councillor De Genova? Oh, yeah, it's on notice? It's just on notice for now? Okay. It comes back in two weeks. Councillor De Genova, new business? Councillor De Genova, new business.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have had a few inquiries, but before the inquiries, I just wanted to mention to council that I represented the city at the request of the mayor's office at Italian Days this past weekend. It was a fantastic day. I think it was record turnout on the drive, and the theme was amore. They always have a fantastic theme. And also, just to mention, you may have seen that I got a visit from the Italian football team, so I have a little Italia flag up this month for Italian Heritage Month, which is recognized here in Vancouver throughout the month of June. And it's my understanding now that a motion came forward in the House of Commons, actually, while Prime Minister Trudeau was visiting the Italian prime minister. And they have also agreed to recognize nationally Italian Heritage Month as a month of June nationally here in Canada. So I just wanted to mention that to everyone. Also, just a few inquiries, some business, hoping to pass these on to our city manager and that staff can follow up. Again, I'd mentioned it at a previous council meeting, but I know that a number of us as councillors have been receiving complaints regarding a particular pet store or the fact that there's no policy right now surrounding pets being sold from puppy mills or other in other fashion. Sorry, I know there's a bit of background noise right now. I was just hoping that staff might be able to advise as to when they'd be following up on those complaints. I know that I had passed on a number of the emails that were sent over to us, to staff. I'm getting a nod, so I'm guessing I will hear back on that soon. Also, there was some concern I'd been hearing from the public, I'm not sure if other councillors had as well, with the mayor and council at vancouver.ca email being out of commission or not monitored anymore. So I was hoping that council might receive a memo on that. I wasn't consulted at all about that or if that was the proper process to move forward. I know that the public, a number of people from the public have said that they didn't feel that it was communicated to them properly and making sure that, you know, City Hall and all councillors are as accessible as possible to the public. I was just hoping that there would possibly be some clarification here in public as to if that is a way that mayor and all councillors can be reached, or do each of us need to be copied individually now on emails? Because that's an inquiry I received from citizens, perhaps the clerk's office or our city manager could answer that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council, happy to jump up. Firstly, on your first inquiry regarding the pet stores and the puppy mill concern, we have received emails on our staff are looking into that matter. And so we'd be happy to report back to you in a written form, just to give you an update on our findings for that. And we will close the loop as well on the emails that we've gotten. Regarding the email change that you're referring to, I'm actually not familiar with any specific changes, so I'm happy to follow up with you. As you know, we are tracking those differently and making sure that we close them out, but as far as I'm aware, we haven't changed the email address for how emails get distributed. So I'll follow up with you on that as well.
Thank you. Just to follow up to that, I received some emails from people that said that the account sent back a response saying it wasn't being monitored, or that it wasn't monitored. So it would be great to have some clarification on that. And then the other issue that we have heard come up is regarding the relocation of tenants from the Balmoral Hotel and as many SROs, especially in the downtown east side, continue to age out. It would be very interesting for me overall to hear, not specifically regarding the Balmoral, but regarding the city of Vancouver's plans, if an incident like this happens where a number of people need to be relocated or rehoused quite quickly or immediately, because I know that that was a concern. I'd also like to thank staff. I know our staff did a fantastic job working with BC Housing, a number of other agencies. That's what I had heard, to relocate people. But just looking to the future and considering the number of those buildings, especially in the downtown east side, are very old and could face the same situation as the Balmoral, it would be good to have an update on the contingency plan for that in the future.
Mr. Mayor, happy to respond briefly. As you know, we have an SRO task force that's actively working on these issues, and our two GMs, community services and buildings and licensing, are working on that issue together. So we will continue to update council on it. And the move outs from the Balmoral are occurring still this afternoon and will likely go into the evening. So we're actively working to get folks into their new housing. So our intention is to try to find a new house for everybody, and we're on track to do that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor De Genova. Councillor Reimer is next.
Thanks, Mayor Robertson. I just have three things of note for council. I did, I know I have the motion coming forward and you've all read the background, but did want to note that today is the 131st anniversary of the Great Fire in Vancouver, which happened in 1886. And for historical reference to note, in chambers on this day, that history, which was one of the seminal events in Vancouver's founding, really, it's incredible to think of 1,000 buildings burning down in a city that had 1,005 buildings or 1,003 buildings, actually, so quite a significant event in our history. I also wanted to note, I represented council at the request of the mayor's office at the UBCM Community to Community Forum, which brings together Indigenous and non-Indigenous communities, mayor and council and chief and council to talk about different efforts on reconciliation. And this edition was held out at the Muskeam Reserve. I was on a panel with the Muskeam, Skomish and Swealitou, speaking about Vancouver's experience and echoing the comments that were noted under Canada 150+. It is quite, it's quite profound to see how, I mean, for us, it's kind of, I think we have a sense of how profound the work is on reconciliation, but it's also sort of the day-to-day work that we do, to see how other communities around the province look at our work and see in that inspiration and hope for what they're able to do. And we must have had, I think about a quarter of the people there were staff from Vancouver, some of whom worked very directly on reconciliation, but what was really, it was so inspiring to see people from like engineering and frontline park staff and library all there looking at how they could more deepen their engagement and also share with other communities. So it was a proud day for me to represent Vancouver, but I wanted you all to share in that feeling because it was a really good one. Also to note that about 12, well, no, it's been about 15 hours ago, I got back from a conference called Fearless Cities that brought together cities, 180-plus cities from five continents that all have governing majorities that come from popular citizens movements. I was there to represent Vancouver related largely to the green policy, but they're also, these citizens movements around the world are all pursuing very similar agendas to what we've been pursuing here in Vancouver. Happy to share information with anyone who might have an interest on it. There was a fantastic range of policies on everything from sharing economy, sanctuary cities, housing. There was a plenary we were in with 700 people from 180 different cities. The question was asked, how many of you have trouble, like how many of you have escalating homelessness and skyrocketing rents? Every single hand in the room went up, whether they were from Asia, from Africa, from Europe, from North America, from South America. It was a bit, kind of took your breath away, but there was also the hope that together we can find solutions that deal with the global crisis around housing and poverty.
Thank you very much, councillor Reimer. And councillor Carr is next.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to give my, sorry, my thanks and congratulations to the number of city staff who were recognized at our city service awards this past week. It was a fantastic event. Many of you attended. But just to hear the stories of how city staff went above and beyond the call of duty and in their innovation, their effort, et cetera. And in particular, I will note in terms of really trying to resolve the issues that so many of our citizens had regarding the snowstorms this past winter and also in terms of the opioid crisis in the downtown east side and just, again, my thanks and acknowledgement. It was a great, it's a great event. So I hope that we do always continue that in the future. Secondly, I did note that regarding the Balmoral Hotel and the fact that we have found, I imagine in some miraculous way with BC Housing, the homes for people who have been left homeless by the fact that the building can no longer be lived in. And that in the media, and I'm just asking for correction if I'm wrong about that, that in the media, the statement was that we will, as a city pursuer, we intend to pursue taking the owners, the Sahotas, to court. I'd like a briefing, if it's in camera, that's fine, around that situation in particular. I know that I've raised this before, and there've been, it's been stated that there are challenges around doing that, so I'd particularly like to know if we can have that briefing, if there are ways to overcome those challenges, including potentially working with the new provincial government.
Happy to respond briefly, Mr. Mayor. As you know, council, we've certainly requested charter changes to give us additional powers to be able to prosecute, ticket and go after landlords in different ways that are not taking care of their SROs. So there are additional powers that we would like. Nonetheless, we are pursuing, we are, we have recommended, I believe it's about 64 items to the prosecutor to pursue, and they're considering those currently. So we are pursuing the actions that we can, given the current powers that we have, and we would like to pursue additional powers with the province.
Excellent. I'd love to hear those details fleshed out further in the future.
Most certainly.
My final is a notice of motion that I have sent to the city clerk. And I did, I actually originally intended to do a referral motion, but did understand that that was not the appropriate process during the discussion or the completion of the public hearing. So in the event that that motion was defeated, or that the recommendations were defeated, which we just did, I had prepared a notice of motion, which you have in front of you. And the motion asks that city, so this will be at the next, hold on a second, the next council meeting, that city council direct staff to quickly pursue options, particularly with the new provincial government to purchase if necessary the 105, 544 Columbia Street site and develop it as 100% social housing, especially for seniors. I say if necessary because I am, and I said this in my comments at the end of our public hearing process, that the BD group has a very strong philanthropic record within the greater Vancouver area. And I do not know what they intend to pursue, but I do believe staff should contact them and that we do have a very open-minded provincial incoming government around social housing and seniors issues. So that is why I've added those words, if necessary, because we don't know what discussions might lead to at this point.
Okay, that is officially on notice. Thank you, councillor Carr. And anything further from council, new business inquiries, other matters? Seeing none. Councillor Louie, you have.
Yes, I have a secondary motion that I've submitted to the clerk for distribution. Relatively simple matter for your consideration. It is asking that it be removed as the council liaison for Chinatown planning area and removed also as the council liaison for chat pack.
You're putting that on notice?
We can consider it now if somebody would second that. You can have this.
Someone want to second that? Okay, notice, so we'll see that in two weeks at our next council meeting. And looks like that's all for new business, other matters, inquiries, and that means we are ready for a motion to adjourn this council meeting. Moved by councillor Stevenson, second by councillor De Genova. All those in favor of adjournment? Any opposed? That carries. And we are adjourned today. We are back.